Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Mayor Potemkinbana?
She won't be here.
Council Sandoval?
Here.
Council Dickens?
Here.
Council Lewis?
Here.
We stand to adjourn the Plenpleague Leaguers meeting.
The Plenpleague Leaguers is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hurrah!
Citizens to address the council. A way to approve the agenda. We have cancer. To look at the agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second. Council Sandoval?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Uh, Robert Wainhurst? Come on up. You wanna address the council, come on up. Well, this mic up here would be better.
Well, my question, sir, and I should've asked beforehand. I wanted to address the council about Chief Vanderburg's comments and his report. But I, I wasn't aware of the procedure.
No, that's no problem. Um, if you wanna wait and do it when we, when Chief's done, that's fine. If you wanna go before him then...
That would be fine with me.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. Um, one, one item that we're gonna add tonight is, at the end of this meeting, we're gonna have an emergency city council meeting. Okay, we're gonna do this meeting, we have an emergency city council meeting immediately after this one. Um, as we have to make final pay application for First Street, or we're gonna lose about a million bucks. Okay, so, we're gonna take care of that tonight.
And that will be public?
Yes, it will. So, don't go nowhere, hang out. We end this one, we're gonna run another one, real fast, okay? Um, public comment on the charter. Our compliance in the charter. Do we have anybody out there that'd like to comment on our charter?
Mr. Mayor, we're in compliance with the charter.
Yes, and also, on that note, with our charter, what I'd like to let the public know is, in January, we're gonna have Laura looking at setting up a charter committee. Cause we're gonna clean up all the footnotes that are in it, that we're in violation of. Um, and we're gonna present it back to the public in the 2016 election to re-approve it. After we clean it up and adjust it where it needs to be adjusted, and of course, the public will, will be the ones that will do that. So, if you're interested in sitting on that committee, let us know, without a doubt. Next is, I'm gonna read a proclamation here, and it's Native American Heritage Day. Whereas each year during the month of November, communities take the opportunity to remind the citizens of many and significant contributions that have been made by tribes and Native American citizens. And whereas there are 184 federally recognized tribes, and whereas on November 22nd, we would like to pay tribute to our Native American brothers and sisters for their many contributions to the City of Grants. And whereas we recognize that Native Americans have profoundly shaped our country's character, culture, and heritage. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Martin Hicks, Mayor of the City of Grants, to hereby proclaim, November 22nd, 2014, Native American Heritage Day, and call upon all citizens to observe this day as such. On this 28th day of October. Next, regular city council meetings from 10 to 7, 14, have any corrections? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion we accept the minutes for Tuesday, October 7, 2014.
Second.
Second.
Council Sandoval?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Special city council meetings, 10, 21, and 14. Any corrections to these? I didn't see any.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 21st.
Second.
A second.
Council Sandoval?
Yes.
Council Dickens?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Laura? Manager's report.
Um, I provided a report in your packet, and I'll highlight some of the things in the report. Basically, I've been trying to attend a lot of our, um, committee meetings, so I can become familiar with what they're working on, what some of their initiatives are, and they've been very responsive to having me attend their meetings, and it's been very helpful to me, learning to see what the priorities are. Um, I also have been working on looking at upgrading our water meters, and I determined that our water meters are pretty old, and they're not really calculating accurately. So, I talked to the village in Milan, and Marcella indicated that the village puts about, um, 25,000 in their budget every year to replace old meters. So, I might wanna look at that and see what your perspective is on that.
Uh, my perspective is we probably need to double what Milan needs, easy.
How, how many total users do we have on the year?
I don't know off the top of my head, but a lot, and, um...
I wanna say it's about 5,000, Mike.
I'd recommend about, uh, 10% each year, over a period of 10 years, we have them all replaced.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Obviously, we wanna see how much it would cost before we can decide...
Yeah, we're buying these, we're buying yours every single year, guys.
Well, we could include those in the 10%.
Yes.
Right, the ones that break that we have to replace, yes. Okay. Um, we worked on, uh, organizing interviews for the marketing coordinator position, and we had a committee that selected Brittany Byrds, who is actually here tonight doing the filming.
Congratulations.
Yeah, in a couple of weeks, Brittany will be our marketing coordinator, and we have a list of, of items for her to start working on. We ordered the Hummer camera, and that is already in, um, it's in my office. And then, we're gonna be working on getting her a computer and some things, that we have quite a few items for her to start working on. Um, she will be housed at the chamber, and so I'll be developing memorandum of agreement, and it's actually the mining museum, with the mining museum to house her there and work in partnership with other community organizations.
That works.
Let's see. I attended the county CDBG public meeting, so that we can kinda coordinate our projects and see what each, um, government entity's priorities are and work together. I've been working with our software company, the Cassell organization, to start working on transitioning that. We have, we need that program up and running by March, because our old software contract runs out. Um, we've been working with the village and the county on the central dispatch program, and we'll be talking about that later in your agenda. Um, we're looking at activating our beautification committee that used to be active, and so we're soliciting people who are interested, and then we'll talk about some areas where we can start improving the beautification of our community. I'm also gonna start, um, prepare to host a meeting with a couple of individuals to talk about the signage that's needed in Grants to... I know the hospital has already called and requested signage there, indicating a lot of people coming off the interstate might have an emergency, and they're having trouble finding where the hospital is. There's other places like our college, high school, the Riverwalk, Mount Taylor, that we could put some signage up and really make it easy for people to get around and find key areas in our community. Um, I attended the bike rally committee meeting and kinda helped with, um, some suggestions for, um, the next year's bike rally, or how we can change that up. I've been researching funding for our library, and as that's a priority of many of the council and myself, so, um, Evan from the COG has sent me some information that I'm gonna start working through and see if we can find some additional funding. Um, the mayor and I went out to the golf course to assess the conditions, and we had some ideas of how we can improve some things out there. I worked on developing a petty cash policy, which is in your packet to approve tonight. And I'm working with the city clerk and the code enforcement office to establish some, uh, procedures for business license registration. We have a little controversy over how that's supposed to flow between the different offices, so we're trying to come up with a step-by-step procedure.
Laura, this is exactly why we hired you, and you don't know how much I appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Two, two points here with the bike rally. Uh, Mike and I were there, uh, there to be in a fine tent instead of a...
Renting it every year.
They said they might save money there, so that's something to, Laura, do research. Uh, they actually sell used tents, so, yeah.
I think Manny, uh, Manuel Vasquez, says it's a thing.
Yeah.
Uh, who's the, um, president of the, of the, uh, Main Street Board right now? He's researching that, he's gonna bring us a packet, I think, at the next meeting.
Yeah, I wanted Laura to look into it also this year.
But I think it's a great idea. See, see if you can partner with some of the other groups that use the tent around town or fencing around town.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking, that it could be used for weddings at the golf course. Um, you know, there's lots of community events that they are utilizing a tent, and we're purchasing the rental from out of town. So, if we had something here where it could stay local, that would be great.
Well, uh, they think it would save us money, so it probably, probably will. Uh, another thing is, we, we've never been able to get a, a JPA with the county. We, we had one verbally with, with the county and Milan, but the county's not giving their fair share for, for the library, just to maintain the library, just with the usage that the county has. So, that's another thing to look at with, uh, this new manager that they have, is that the JPA try to get the money that they should be paying. I mean, Milan is paying more than the county, and the county uses it more, so that's something that they can...
Janiri, what is that? What is, what is the county's usage compared to ours and Milan's?
Um, Milan averages around 10 to 11% of our books going to them. The ci, the City of Grants is about 60, 65, and then the county's about 30 or so.
And, and you've got the Milan paying more than, than the county, you know, so...
And if the city, uh, excuse me for interrupting, but if the city council would like to have either raw data or percentages, I can pull that together for them.
I don't think that's necessary.
I think it's already been done.
Yeah, we just need to get the county off work, so...
It's already been done, they, they have all of that.
Yeah, we got all that. We appreciate it, though. Okay? Uh, anything else on the manager's report?
Good job, man.
Good job, exactly, that's why we brought you here. Chief Vanderburg, you're up, um, and just so everybody knows here, I've already gone over this report with Chief Vanderburg. Um, I am very pleased with what is happening here. Uh, we are taking the town forward, guys, we sure are, and public safety is my number one priority, period. So, go ahead, Chief, let us have it.
All right. As you know, um, Andrew Vosovich was here, he told me, he said, oh, he presented this audit. So, I, I've just kinda gone down through each paragraph, each thing that he highlighted, and I've prepared an answer for each one of those. So, um, with that being said, we'll start right off, existing policies and procedures. We wrote and submitted to the city manager to approve the new pursuit policy. The reason this one was done first is because it's required to be submitted to DPS and the New Mexico Department of Transportation. That's already been done and taken care of. A recording policy, when I wrote this, it was, um, in the review stages, but it's actually been approved and in place. What that does, it provides for, um, all recording of, in the vehicles, the in-car cameras, the body mics, the digital recorders. It, it puts checks and balances in place, it, it tells the officers exactly when they have to be on, how long they have to be on, what they're on for. And then, in order, so we, in the future, we don't have problems that we're not aware of, it mandates that the supervisors randomly check two in-car mics, or two in-car cameras, two voice recorders and two body recordings each week. Each sergeant does it for each person on his shift, and then the lieutenant does it for the sergeants. And then, they give a log to me at the end of the month on which ones were randomly checked, and then we just spot check those. Just checks and balances that we put in place for the body recordings.
So, the procedure is that any stop that's made, or any, uh, investigation that's happening by the police department, the mics are on.
Yes, sir.
In video.
Any public, any public contact.
Any, any contact with the public, yes, sir.
Because when they start screaming that we're abusing them and, and it's gonna sue them, we've got it all right there, so...
The thing, when, when I first took this position, there were a lot of public complaints, there were a lot of public complaints. Um, the complaints that I'm getting now are different than when I first started, the complaints now are, my, I got a ticket, someone got a ticket, the officer stopped me, we're able to check those. One of the questions that I ask is, was the officer unprofessional, was he rude, did he, did he do anything that he wasn't supposed to do? Um, if they make those allegations, I can pull the videotape and check it. The videotapes are, are considered evidence, so there's only certain people that have access to all of the videotapes. The sergeants have access to the patrolmen, the lieutenant has access to the sergeants, and then I have access to all of them. And we'll address it in here further, we can do it now. All the complaints that come to the police department in order to, um, for it to be open and public, so that the public can get satisfaction that their complaints are being, um, checked, all of the complaints come directly to my office. The ones that are serious, we farm out to an outside company. Um, the ones that are not serious, either I investigate them or I sign them to someone of a higher rank than the person who's being checked. And then I review all the responses and the attachments. We treat it, um, each complaint is serious, and we treat it like a small criminal case. But the, the cases, we haven't had any. There, I mean, there's, we're still getting complaints, and we always will, the more the, the officers pull people over, the more complaints we're gonna get. But the, the complaints are not of a serious nature. They're, we are, in the City of Grants, we're quite lucky, we have some really good patrolmen, we have some really good, um, we're all of them now. We, we don't have any complaints, we're getting better and better and better, and we're teaching the young guys to be professional, they're working on their public interaction, all of these things are just picking up and going forward.
So, is this something that wasn't in place?
That, that was, um...
Go ahead, Greg, just tell the way it is, man, you were hired to fix this department.
Our policy manuals, most of them were signed by either Chief Vosovich or Chief Field. So, we have, don't have any recent, uh, the use of force policies still have side handle batons in them, and we haven't had those in years. You know, just some of them are old and outdated. I, I, I can't explain to you the reason, I don't know, I, I just don't know. But I'm going through the book, and I'm trying to pick the ones that are most important, and I'm reviewing those and, and getting those updated as quick as I can. And when we get to the end of the thing, you understand that I, I spent quite a bit of time not in the office, doing stuff, that other stuff that needed to be done, so I'm trying to balance those two things. I mean, my wife comes to city council with me, so she can see me.
I'm sorry, we hope it gets better soon, okay?
I go home and she asks, well, who are you, so, oh, anyway. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm updating, I'm working from the most important policies down to the, the ones that will have to be reviewed, but we're just trying to get it to where that every year we can go through update, and then it can be, we're putting them on computer, we're typing them up, put them on in a digital format, so that they can be used, user-friendly.
Great.
Traffic citations, there was an issue with the traffic citations, this is covered by law. We just went through the, the book, and we covered everything, that has been corrected, that's all put in place, the, the corrections are in place. The issuing is in place, the checks and balances are in place. Every, every disposition, and, and I don't understand why he said he couldn't find the dispositions. The, the citations are issued by our secretary, are issued by the police officer that turn it to the sergeant, Sergeant Sup, uh, checks them, he turns them into the secretary who enters them, and then the court automatically gets them, and then they get the paper copy, but it's already entered in the computer. Every citation that is issued has a, a unique number on it, and that unique number has a, a separate check and balance over here, so that we can audit our citations, there are no missing citations. The evidence custodian, the evidence, like we said before, is a big, is a big problem, it's a big job. It's, it's a full-time job, and it has been for a long time, there just wasn't somebody in that position. We're in the process of correcting that, the city manager has approved the job description, we got, um, sample job descriptions from all over the state, we selected what was gonna be the best for our department and our city to, so that we won't have these evidence problems in the future, we're gonna have to purchase some software. And some of the software out there is a little bit expensive, some of it is a little bit cheaper. But I, what I'm going to recommend when the time comes is we get the same software program that the state labs are using, so that when we log evidence in, there's no difference in the chain of custody forms that go from here to the state labs. We don't have to, to retype and put it on the forms that they will accept. They're already on that form, so there's no chain of custody issues. So, when we get to that point, the evidence technician is hired, and we get that, that's what I'm going to recommend. And that is the reason that I'm going to recommend it, so that we don't have those chain of custody issues in the future. Um, training, all, I, I audited the training files, all of the training for the 2012, 2013 cycle, they call them biennium cycles, is, is completed and was completed, all of the officers are currently, um, their, their certifications are in good standing. Everything is, is up to date. For the 2014, 2015 cycle, I'm just about halfway through the mandatory training. We will have it done, if it's not done this year, we'll do it early in January. What I'm doing is I'm scheduling four hours once a month, everybody comes in, they get four hours of training once a month. And, uh, so we have 40 hours of mandatory training. 24 of that is set down by the legislature on exactly what we have to teach. That is almost done, and then advanced training will come after that. We, the ammunition was ordered, so that we can keep our weapons qualifications up and in good standing. The field training officer program is currently under review, and we'll go into that in further detail in just a minute. As you know, we ordered new vehicles, the vehicles should be in sometime in the next few weeks before they're issued. Uh, and I have to correct that, after they're issued, each officer that has issued one of those new vehicles is gonna be sent to the emergency vehicle operations training in that vehicle, so they understand the capability of that vehicle. It will reduce the city's liability and give them training in that patrol vehicle that they're assigned to. Because the new vehicles, we're going from rear-wheel-drive Crown Vix to all-wheel-drive, either Torres's or Explorers. So, there is a change in vehicle dynamics, that's why we're doing the vehicle operations training. Um, we're working on a training program for sergeants and the senior officers, we're going to implement a less-than-lethal program, so that there's some options between fighting with someone and having to shoot someone, so that we can get the less-than-lethal beanbag rounds and the gas rounds, so that the officers have a better selection in their, in their toolbox, so that they can deal with the public, you know, in, in more incremental steps. Um, we're gonna start with the sergeants and the senior officers, and work our way down, and hopefully equip everyone with those tools. Right here, the training, as the audit states, is very important, part of the development of fresh, professional, long-term police officers. For every dollar spent in training, the city will see a $10 return. Training will reduce our liability, it will reduce our complaints, and it will enhance our ability to, um, investigate crimes. The weapons, a complete weapon inventory was done, I had it redone, and then I audited that. And all the weapons that are on the city inventory are accounted for. So, we're not missing any weapons, there, there's none, they're all accounted for. At this point, everything was, that the city has purchased that I can find, that, that was on any inventory is accounted for. Um, we have two firearms instructors in the future, I would like to send someone else, because I'm one of the firearms instructors, and we need two for training purposes. The training is costly, so we're gonna make do with what we have, and, and we'll address that in the future. The TASER inventory was complete, um, we thought that there was two that were not accounted for, but in between the time that I wrote this and the time that we are here today, um, the TASERS were returned from the TASER Corporation. So, all of the TASERS that the police department has purchased are accounted for as well. What we're going to do is, some of them are inoperable, and instead of keeping them on an inventory and making our inventory look like we have 30 or 40 TASERS, TASER has a program where we send them back to them, they're destroyed, and then they give a certificate of destruction to us. So, um, the internal affairs, an internal affairs tracking log and file has been implemented and is located in my office, so that all internal affairs are done, completed, and because there are personnel issues, the only one that can review those is, is myself, and then the city manager in turn. So, like I said before, if, if it is likely to involve criminal activity, we, we hire an outside company to come in, that investigator completes that, completes a packet, and then gives it to me, I review it, and then I sit down with the city manager and review those results. So, I believe that's all of the points in the audit. And then, one, one of the things that the audit asked for me to do was implement long-range plans for the Grants Police Department. So, some of these things that I'm gonna ask for, I'm gonna ask for, um, I have a unique...
You wanna go over the addition, additional concerns first?
Additional concern, okay?
I want the public to understand what we're doing, I mean, you paid seven drug busts in the last two months, where you hadn't had nothing for years before.
Okay. Items I'm concerned, there is quite a few, there's 11 of them, okay? Scheduling of officers need to be based on calls for service, detective division needs to track and follow up on cases. Month reports must be completed, so the command staff can make decisions on manpower allocation based on crime rates and calls for service. The uniform policy must be reviewed to make sure officers follow those guidelines, professional uniform appearances are must. Communication system must be reviewed ASAP along with mobile data, data system, this is an officer safety issue. Use of body video recorders and in-car camera policy needs to be reviewed and then followed. Supervisors should review both body camera and in-car video on a regular basis to make sure all officers are following proper procedures and conducting themselves in a professional manner. The hiring process must be reviewed and updated if needed, and then make sure the procedures are followed. The FTL program needs to be reviewed, and then make sure all new officers that follow that program prior to being released to patrol on their own. Training records must be reviewed to make sure all officers are compliant with NMLA standards. Firearms need to be audited to make sure the department firearm, including ammunition and TASER, accounted for. Firearms training needs to be reviewed to determine if all officers are compliant with NMLA standards. TASER training must also be reviewed to make sure all, all officers are current on their certification. The evidence rooms must be inventoried and complete audit must be completed. A person must be assigned full-time to complete this task, an evidence tracking system, a computer program should be purchased. Once the audit is completed, a system needs to be put in place to begin the return destruction of property. This involve, this will involve the close coordination with the district attorney's office. Management must develop a strategic plan to move the department forward, specific components should address internal communications, individual accountability, and practices designed to bolster the community's confidence in the department. That is what was written in the audit. So, I have gone through and tried to address each and every one of those, and, um, like I said, I have a unique perspective. When I'm asking for these things, my perspective is in order to make the department the best department that the city can have. I, I, when I'm, I'm gonna ask for a, a change in the department's retirement policy. I already have a retirement policy, and I can't change that. I, I have a salary set by the city, my salary is based on what you decide is the cost of living allowance. So, when I ask for this raises for the officers and the staff, it's not because of, it's gonna, I don't have a, there's no greed on my part, okay? That, that's what I'm trying to get across, is I have a unique perspective. I don't, there, there's nothing that I am to gain, other than my job will be better, and when I leave this department, I hope to leave a better department. Because, like I said before, I have a vested interest in this community, because my children and grandchildren live here. So, with that being said, these are some of the things that I, I'm going to ask for. And I understand that it's not gonna be all at once, and we're gonna build this department up slowly, as the city can, can do what they can do, all right? Um, like the mayor said, we have, um, we've hit four houses, four drug houses. Each one of these drug houses takes about five or six weeks of work. Not every one of them, and I'll explain one in a minute, but the, the DAs require a certain number of purchases from a house by a certain number of confidential informants or a certain number of people. They have to be done, we have to follow those rules and regulations, we have to film them, we have to videotape the money, we have to photograph the money, we have to, we have to pat search the people that are gonna buy it, to make sure they don't have any cash or drugs before they go in, and pat search them after they come out, to make sure that only what we purchased was there. So, there's a, a check and balance in place to get these search warrants signed and approved. So, we've hit four in the last two weeks, three weeks. The, the one that I said doesn't take necessarily four to five weeks, is we, we hit one, and then on Ravenwood, you probably read this in the paper. We hit it one Saturday night, we got some drugs, we arrested four people out of this house, we got, the neighbors were very happy. I go to these, so that I can deal with the, the neighbors and the public and the press, because they're loud, they're dynamic, and that is done for officer safety issues. We use flashbangs, we use distraction devices, we try to get the bad guys to looking in a different direction to where we're coming from, so that the officers can be safe while they're doing this. so that the officers can be safe while they're doing this. So with all that being said, we hit a house on Ravenwood, we got a number of, a pretty good amount of drugs. We arrested people, those people were released. We hit another house a couple of days later on Houston. We got some drugs out of that property, we got some arrests out of there. We got some small children out of that residence, some very small children, six and under. We hit the Ravenwood property again, two weeks to the day after we hit it the first time. We arrested the same people and got the same kind of drugs out of there. Now that we're doing this, we're having more and more difficulty purchasing drugs into the city of Grants. Our CI's are having to go outside of the city of Grants. So in conjunction with the Milan Police Department, right before last, we hit an address in Milan. We got a lot of drugs out of there. The reason we did that is number one, to make the whole community safe, but number two, they're using Milan address as a house to bring the drugs to the city of Grants to sell them out of vehicles. In addition to that, we had two bus out of motor vehicles for distribution as well. So we're doing our best, we're locking up the bad guys, we're trying to put them away. We need to elicit assistance from the judges to keep them that way.
Very nice way of putting it, Greg.
Is it necessary to make all the noise about it? Is that required, or can you keep it low?
For the flashbangs?
No, no, to the announcements, people getting caught, you know, it's like.
It's not necessary, but it's helpful.
Okay, so it helps more to announce?
Absolutely, yes. It's public information, absolutely. Because if we don't, what happens? Every time we hit one of these residences, like I said, we use the distraction devices and we use the flashbangs. These people have security systems like you wouldn't believe. They don't spend any money on anything else, but they have the most advanced security systems that you can imagine. I mean, we've taken some cameras, infrared cameras, thermal imaging cameras, we have long-distance cameras. They can see us coming from a long ways.
But what I'm saying is you're like warning everybody, here we come, you know.
They're warning each other too.
Yeah, we don't have to do that. When we hit that, when we hit that house on Ravenwood, it took about four minutes for it to hit Facebook. I mean, so what I've been doing is asking the press if they want to come take pictures while we're doing it. It's just an intimidation factor, the police are here, we're making it safer.
It's not a safe place to be for the criminals.
And you know, I have people come by, and I don't know if this is the right thing or do, but it's what I did. I have people come by and are complaining to me that the officers are sitting outside of their residence and stopping people as they leave. And, you know, I told them, if you're not doing anything wrong, you don't have anything to worry about. And if you're selling drugs in the city of Grants, leave. I, you know, that's my opinion. We want to make this a safer community, and that's the way we need to do it, high-profile policing. You ask me to do that, you ask me to make it pain.
Make my day.
So, to address the other things, like I said, the long-range plans for officer retention. I would like to implement a salary step increase program. We all know that we have young police officers that are here, we're training them. We got a good group of police officers, we really do, and I want to keep them, okay? The police department and the fire department are going to have to be looked at as a quality of life issue. I don't know if you were aware of this, the mayor wasn't the other day when I told him, when businesses come to the city of Grants, the first place they go is not the Chamber of Commerce. They go to the police departments, they give their twenty dollars, and they ask for the calls for service for the last two weeks. Then they look at those calls of service, and before they even go to the Chamber of Commerce, they check your police logs and what kind of crime and crime activity that you have. And then they check your fire rating, and then they check your schools. So what I'm trying to do is make that call log look positive. When they Google the city of Grants, the stories that are on there right now are not positive. But as, over time, those, what I'm hoping is they will become more and more positive, and we can attract industries. And these quality of life issues, so that the Grants Police Department and the Grants Fire Department will be up there where they need to be, so that these quality of life issues can be addressed by those bigger corporations. Like I said, I don't, there's no greed in this for me because I have a job and I'm retired. So I don't need another job. So, but, you know, my children and my grandchildren do, real children and grandchildren. You know, you want to keep them close so you can watch them grow up and flourish. So that's, that's my point of view. So, the safer we make our community, the better quality of life it will be. I want to explore the possibility of moving our police department from PER Municipal Plan Three to Municipal Plan Four. That doesn't require any commitment by the city, that's all. It changes the officer's contribution from eight percent to twelve percent. That's why I'm asking for, in the future, to give them a pay raise. Because if we implement the retirement plan where we can give them a good retirement and I can use that for recruitment, they take home less money. And they're young, and they have kids, and that's a burden to them at this point. I want to explore the possibility of a merit pay increase for the FTO officers during the FTO period. Not constantly, but while they're training our new officers, we pay them a little more, we give them an incentive to be the best FTO they can possibly be.
What's FTO stand?
Field Training Officer, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Mike.
And to support this, the city of Grants has invested just under a million dollars. What I did was I went back ten years, and I took the officers that had left the city of Grants, not because they got fired or because they were a bad apple, just the ones who we trained, equipped, and kept, and then they moved somewhere else for a better job. And we spent nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, just under a million dollars, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and something dollars to train and equip police officers in the last ten years for someone else. That, that's why, you know, like I said, they're young, they have families, they're going to go where they can make the best for their family. And I want that to be here. In order for, to become competitive and have a highly-trained and dedicated police department, we need to implement measures to keep the officers we have trained and equipped, and this in turn will bolster the community's confidence and allow us to consistently investigate crime to make our community safer. Officer recruitment, I want to explore a public safety aid program. City of Grant, the city of Gallup, Albuquerque and Farmington have this. I don't like, and I was told today it was because I came from the state police, and we don't do this, but the city and most smaller agencies have what we call an uncertified officer program. We get the officer, we train them, we give them an FTO period, but before they go to the academy, we turn them loose on the streets to get some experience. I don't like that, I really don't like that. I think it leaves the city open for a lawsuit and for litigation, and I just don't like it. So I'm working to change that.
Yeah, they give them a whole year.
Right, they can be on the street for a year before they go to the academy. And I don't, I don't like that.
What does a public safety aid?
What the public safety aid do is we hire people, these young people, we give them the training, but they're not given firearms, and they're not given police duties, but they're given non-emergency duties. They can write citations for fire zone violations at Smiths and Walmart and businesses. They can write handicap citations to these businesses. They can answer the non-emergency calls, they can patrol our libraries, they can patrol our Riverwalks, they can patrol the mining museum. I had a meeting with the hospital, and they are willing to do a cost-sharing program with us because they can't hire a security person. But if we can hire a public safety aide that will spend some of his time at the hospital, they will share that salary with us. We can, businesses that are closing, that public safety aide can go there, watch those people go to their car. We can use them for special activities at the Riverwalk. All of these quality of life issues where we want people to come here, we want them to feel safe as well. But those little things like that consume a police officer's time to answer these calls, and they're necessary, they're absolutely necessary, but they're not absolutely necessary for a certified police officer to do. We could train and equip other people to do that and save money in the long run. The Explorer program is where we take juniors and seniors. They volunteer their time, they get some of the training, report-writing training, some of the investigative training that they can use in the future. There are people who are willing to help us pay for this program. They will pay us to train these young men and women and give them high school and college credit. And then, we have a training day, they work two Saturdays or two weekends a month. They have a training day, and then they have an activity day where they do something positive for the community. They gather food for needy families, they paint numbers on trees, they pick up trash. A training day and an activity day, that's the way the Explorer program works.
Nice.
So, the restructuring of the department, the chain of command. I'm in the process of trying to promote a lieutenant now. In the future, what I would like to do is add a deputy chief position. And with that being said, it just will streamline our chain of command because on the next budget cycle, what I'm going to ask for is another sergeant and three more patrolmen. I have my shifts covered now, we'll go over the shift schedule in just a minute. I do have my shifts covered now, but in the future, it's going to be harder and harder and harder to purchase drugs. It's going to take more time. It's going to be, like Counselor Samuel said, we're advertising it now, so we have to be adaptable, we have to do different things. And I can use this as an incentive to get the very best police officers to go on like, you can name it whatever you want, a task force, a strike force, whatever. Whatever we deem necessary, whatever we deem as a problem in the city, we can have this group of people address that problem. Whether it be drugs or drunk drivers, burglaries. We have bicycles, we can put them on bicycles, have three of them ride in a bicycle in the neighborhoods. Because like I said, they have surveillance systems, they know we're coming, but they're not looking for people on bicycles. Those kind of things we can address with this manpower. And like I said, I understand this is not going to happen all at once, they told me to make long-range plans, so.
Would these people come from people you already have, that would be advanced, or there's extra people?
I'm going to ask for more people and then use the very best ones for this detail. And that would, with those additions, it would allow me to put another detective in the detective division so that we can investigate, because the more we arrest, the more we're going to investigate. And we're going to, we're going to need more people to address the evidence and the investigations and the follow-ups and those type of things. The shift schedule, I put it on there, it's an eight-hour schedule. You have two officers on day shift, two officers on swing shift, two officers on gray grid. The traditional six to two, two to ten, ten to six shift. Then the split shift one, I have an OIC and an officer, they cover those shifts on their days off. And then I have a split shift, and I don't know if I gave you the updated schedule, but now, at this point in time, with the exception of a vacant lieutenant position, I'm staffed. So where it says split shift two, there are four officers now instead of the two. I think I gave you the updated one, but I'm not sure. So those officers are on a ten-hour shift, and they work from eight at night till four in the morning. Because the audit said we needed to base our staffing on our calls for service. So we took our calls for service, we inputted that, and right now, the calls for service are from six at night till four in the morning. There are calls during the days and earlier, but the majority of our calls come in between those hours. As it gets colder, the hours will come back, it will come back more towards the afternoon because people are staying in houses longer, have more domestics, you know, and they have to spend more time together. But, so we have the ability with that split shift to adjust those hours as needed for our calls for service to make, to answer the calls for service for the public better. I met with the state police. I have outlined new, I addressed this once before in the council, new procedures to investigate crimes. I can't fix everything that happened in the past, but I can change it from this point and then in the future. I met with the state police, we have an agreement on how and when, we're going to use their crime scene team, how and when they're going to help us and when we need it. They're giving us training for our current investigators so that we can be better, we can be better prepared when those happen. And that, because if they're busy, we may have to handle it ourselves, so we're going to implement this training program. I today had a meeting with, to get us on an investigative network and a confidential information network funded by the federal government and the Department of Justice. But in order to do that, I have to get us all departmental emails that have a government address because we're currently all using our personal addresses. So I've had that conference, that is in the process, it should be, I'm hoping by the end of this week, we'll have those email addresses in place where we can all utilize that information. The radio issue, I today issued twelve radios. The radios are a huge problem, when the officers get out of their cars, they cannot talk to dispatch. The county fire manager loaned me twelve radios. The company, that, the radio company has set us up a repeater, a temporary repeater at the water tower. And we're currently, I have issued those radios to the line officers who are out and are testing those that before we spend any money, we can make sure that that problem is going to be solved by spending that money. I don't want to spend that twelve thousand dollars and not fix the problem. So we're testing that to make sure that it's going to work now. The computers in the cars, we're very, very close, we're waiting on, I turned in a Verizon contract, and I haven't gotten that returned to me yet. And I signed a purchase order for what are called soft tokens. From what I understand, you have to have the computer, the Verizon AirCard, and then these soft tokens scramble that information so that when it goes to the police department, it can't be intercepted. It's a requirement by NCIC, the National Crime Information Center, that we have those. So we're in the process of programming the computers. I'm hoping in the next week and a week and a half, those computers will be in the units. And I believe with that, I have answered all the questions in the audit.
Counsel, questions?
I just got one question. On, when you do get the additional people you want, like deputy chief additional sergeants and bike patrols and stuff, are these people going to receive additional training for these positions?
Oh, absolutely. No, 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 they, they have to have the training. I mean, I am an absolute and firm believer in training. I mean, I have scheduled every one of the patrolmen who is certified for advanced training between now and December. Most of the training out there that I've been able to get so far has been free or very low cost. I'm sending two in December to become active shooter instructors. They're going to go and spend a week at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center, and they're going to learn how to be active shooter instructors so that they can come back and teach us, teach everybody else. My goal is to send all of the officers to advanced training and make them instructors so that they can come back and instruct everyone else in the future. And as long as we keep those instructors updated, I can send one officer and get ten officers worth of training. I can send those two guys and get twenty officers worth of training. And then I have the ability to offer that training to the sheriff's department or the village of Milan so that not only do we have well-trained officers, they have the opportunity to have well-trained officers as well. I'm trying to maximize the use of our training dollars so that, like the mandatory in-service training, we're doing that all in-house. So that doesn't cost the city anything, but we send them to instructor schools to come back. So the mandatory training is taken care of, and then the advanced training that we need to make it better and safer is what I'm wanting to spend my training dollars on. So absolutely, yes, sir, I would, I want to send everybody to as much training as I possibly can.
See, that's where I want to hear it.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Where is the shooting range for our police department?
We use the range at Western for the prisons.
How do you feel about this shooting range out on Lobo Canyon Road? Being right next to the highway?
That's where Western is.
The one across from Western?
Oh, oh.
That's what I feel about it.
It's kind of an ice war, but, you know. According to the letter of the law, it's something we do about, right?
Yeah, it's a county.
It's the Forest Service.
Oh, okay.
It's Forest Service property, so.
Well, as you know, Chief Vander, the governing bodies' first responsibility is public safety, the police and fire department. And you're not going to get all the money, but we're going to support you.
Okay.
And this council is going to rebuild our police department, a department that can be proud of. And by the way, I saw a list of the top ten most dangerous cities in New Mexico, and we weren't on it.
Yeah.
It's a good place to start.
Right.
Anything else? Anything else from the council?
I'd just like to thank the chief.
Thank you, sir.
I guess this is where you wanna interject your feelings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I just wanna comment on what the chief is doing. I think that Grant City has made great improvements and hiring this chief was one of the best decisions, among many decisions that you have been making. When I moved here three and a half years ago, the city looked like it did when I lived here thirty-three years ago. And you fixed streets and you put in curbs and you have beautified and you painted and you've torn down old buildings. You're making this a wonderful place to live. Part of the problem that the police department has had, and another part of the equation to fixing things, is fixing the judiciary. And having the will to back our law enforcement agencies, when they bring forth cases that have the evidence backing them up and the law backing them up and the proof and all that, they should be supported. No case should be dropped because you are related to someone or you are friends with someone. We have to have the will to do the right thing. And drugs are a pernicious, terrible problem that we have in this county right now. And I'm grateful for Chief Vanderver and his proactive approach to going in, finding these people that are using and selling drugs, selling them to our children, creating all this property theft that's going about because of the need for drugs. But he needs the support of the judiciary to do that. And I just know this, that if I'm elected as magistrate judge, I will do that. I will support the law enforcement community. Because I want this to be a safe place for my children and grandchildren to live. And I have nine children. And I am grateful to live here. And I am uplifted to hear what was said tonight and know that that's gonna happen. Thank you so much.
Sir, your name again, please?
Robert Windhorst. And I just wanted to tell Mayor Hicks, I was driving down the road the other day and I had K mine on and you were on the radio and I really enjoyed your comments very much. It was refreshing.
Well, there's some people that don't like the truth, Mr. Windhorst, and I'm about to put it out.
I love truth.
I'm about to put it out there, so...
Well, thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Anything else? I've said it from the get-go, guys, this has been my priority when I came the mayor, was to fix that police department. I even told the fire chief that he was gonna have to wait until next year. I wholeheartedly support everything that Craig's bought up. And on that note, we need to go ahead and pass these budget amendments for his department now and next year, when we go through the budgeting process, we need to look at upping that budget big time to fix what we've got here. We've already got a good start, but we're not about to stop.
Is that resolution fourteen, fourteen?
Yeah, the first one is fourteen, fourteen seventy-four, resolution providing for a second-quarter year-end budget revision for the fiscal year of twenty fourteen fifteen for the city of Grant, state of New Mexico. Now I'll go ahead and read it, whereas adjustments have been made to reflect current personnel needs therein, and whereas adjustments, decreases and increases between light items are necessary to reflect proper operational requirements, and whereas the budget revision is needed to create an evidence custodian position at the police department, now therefore be it resolved that the attached second-quarter year-end budget revision is to provide the necessary expenditures for the city of Grants and it is by approved and appropriated, passed approved and adopted this twenty-eighth day of December. And on that note, I will entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
I make a motion, we pass resolution fourteen dash fourteen seventy-four.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Yes, I've got it right here. Just go ahead and sign that one, we'll pass it around, Denise can have it at the end of the night. The next one is the second revision that he's asking for, and I'll go ahead and read this one too. It's fourteen, fourteen seventy-five, a resolution providing for a second-quarter year-end budget revision for fiscal year twenty fourteen for the city of Grant, state of Mexico, whereas adjustments have been made to reflect current personnel needs therein, whereas adjustments, decreases and increases between light items are necessary to reflect the proper operational requirements, whereas the budget revision is needed to create a kennel maintenance position and make the administrative secretary a full-time position at the animal shelter, now therefore be it resolved that the attached second-quarter year-end budget revision is to provide the necessary expenditures for the city of Grants and it is approved and adopted and appropriated on this twenty-eighth day of October. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept resolution number fourteen dash fourteen seventy-five.
And a second.
Second, but discussion? Laura, you're familiar with what's happening here?
Yeah, I provided, I provided a memo for you and it looks like this, it's on the site somewhere, but the evidence custodian money is going to be pulled from the unused money in the marketing coordinator position from the time that we hadn't hired somebody. And then the other two, the administrative secretary from part-time to full-time, and the kennel maintenance is coming from the unfilled mechanic foreman position. And so we still have money left in those to hire those positions as well, so we found the money there.
Okay. Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
And I appreciate the council's support on this, guys, because we have to take care of that police department, it's gonna take care of our town and it's gonna make it, it's gonna make everything better, guys, period, all the way across the town. Anything else, chief? Thank you very much for the job you're doing.
Thank you, chief.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Petty Cash, you got this one, Laura?
When I came on board, I realized that we were utilizing petty cash, but we had no written policies or procedures, it was just what people had remembered. So I did a little research and I created a policy and procedures so that we would have something in writing and everybody knew what was expected and it was the same for everybody. So you have before you the policy and it's pretty much what we're already doing and has been going on, but we have it written down so that there's no question about how it's all supposed to flow.
And on this, the effective date of this policy will be ten twenty-eight of fourteen today that we pass it, and I'll entertain a motion to change the petty cash policy.
I just got one comment.
Go ahead.
Has senior citizens this fifty dollars and the others have more, but then it says not to exceed the fifty dollars, so what exactly does that mean?
Typically, some of those side departments use that money for change and so I believe that's what the senior citizens use for change. It's probably like when people come and pay for their lunch and things, they have money for change to give out.
And not only that, and your petty cash policy here for the seniors, guys, they have a policy where they can buy emergency food items and stuff, offer that's separate from this.
Well, no, that's not where I'm getting at.
Is why it's only fifty bucks. That's all they need, Eddie.
Okay. That's the answer.
Okay, that's all they need, that's all they requested. The seniors has a different, a different attitude for what they do.
Okay. On that note, I move we accept this.
Second?
Second.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Hey Laura, I have a question on that. We were talking about the city needing a credit card for things, there are things that you buy now through, that you can't get any other way without a credit card. Are we pursuing that?
Yes, we're working on that and I know Denise came back from her training and she said some of the other things we talked about, they're called P cards for government and they utilize them for a lot. And so we have just been trying to research how that goes, we'll need a policy for how the utilization, but we, some communities, Denise said that each person in the staff had one. We probably won't start with that, we'll start small, maybe there'll be some here that are checked out or each department has one, we'll kinda figure out, but we are working on that.
Okay. Any other questions on that? You ready, boys? We're good to go, there. Next item is amendment to the joint agreements, reorganizing the Sipolo Regional Communications Center. I spoke at length with Chief Vanderver about this. He says we need to support this, the last thing we wanna do is take it over ourselves. You're only allowed one nine-one-one call center per county and ours is hit the consolidated dispatch. Believe me, guys, I fought this for six years when I first came on and now after speaking with the chief, I'm gonna support it all the way.
What changes it will be?
The amount of money that Milan's gonna pay in.
The difference is Milan is paying twelve percent.
And they're gonna pay five. And that, and Milan is doing their own thing anyway, okay? And all they've done is, the way Milan does it, they're open for a lawsuit because a nine-one-one calls in and then it's gotta be transferred and all that good stuff. And like I said, after speaking with Chief Vanderver, guys, I'm not a cop, I've never, I was a prison guard, I run a prison, I don't know a damn thing about running a police department. And I'm not gonna act like I do. The chief does, obviously, and he says this is a good thing and we need to stay with it and that's good enough for me.
Is the city gonna make up the difference, the county?
We'll split it between the county the way we always have, guys. We only got the, the, Milan to come in, what, two years ago, chief? Three years ago?
No, Milan's been on board ever since, but the percentage...
No, they weren't paying, they weren't paying.
Mayor, council, if I may, they have been on board, yes, they have not been paying. The original dollar amount that we wanted to get from them when I wasn't even around was considerably more than the twelve, but it's been getting decreased over time, now we're down to five. But if I may, Mayor and council, the initiative that we were discussing, the chief was here when we had our meeting with regards to the changes, I strongly, and I'm gonna try and push this as best I can, to have a referendum in June of twenty sixteen for a quarter cent tax so that everybody pays, tourists alike, everybody comes to visit, so that it's not incumbent upon the city council, the village of Milan, or the county to pay these dollars, they're gonna come from the community itself, but we can do other things with that two-hundred or three-hundred thousand dollars that we chip in every year.
And chief explained that at length to me when we were going over this report. And like I said, I just, after speaking with these gentlemen, I mean, we need to support it, guys. Even if we end up paying fifty percent, it doesn't matter, we end up paying sixty percent, we need to support it, it's the nine-one-one call center and according to our chiefs, both of them standing right there, the last thing we wanna do is take it over ourselves, okay? So on that note, if there's questions, any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the joint power agreement reorganizing the Sipolo Regional Communications Center.
Thank you.
Second.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. The next one, resolution for the demolish of three hundred Stevens. I don't know what happened there, guys, we missed this and we put down three sixteen Stevens. Three sixteen Stevens is another one that needs to be tore down.
This was the first one.
Yes, so we're just gonna do this one and all of them, all of them at the same time, all the ones that we approved last time, and that bid should be going out.
Thirty-two, four, six, K, nine, two.
Yes, it includes the one on Aspen, it includes the two on Stevens, Black Mesa Drive, all of them.
So where are we exactly on that process?
The bid should have gone out. The bid should have gone out, we should know. So if you're tearing down in the next two weeks?
How long does it take? How long does it take to...
Per building?
The time that the bid is let until the building is torn down?
I'm not sure, do you know?
It averages...
A few days.
Three weeks? But once they start, okay, 'cause like we've got five or six properties now, once they start, they go like that. Because all they do is just move around. The biggest part is getting their demolition equipment here. Go ahead, Brady.
The proposal is open for a month, the timeline is open, but the proposal hasn't actually gone out yet because it wasn't finalized and with the circumstances, we're gonna work on...
Because of this resolution right here?
No, with the other, but we're working...
We're gonna take care of that anyway.
We're working on the rest of it so we can put it out as soon as possible.
So when you say as soon as possible, what does that mean?
Well, if we can get into the computer system and get the form, I can fix everything and we can put it out by, what, Thursday or Friday?
There it is. That'll work.
We're in the process of obtaining a password for that computer so that we can get those documents.
I think we should have more password for that computer anyway.
Well, we're fixing to fix all of that, Mike.
The sooner you guys come in and get out the one, so they just come in.
They come in and go. And we're fixing to fix all of that over there.
Trent, you okay with that?
You need a motion on this?
I couldn't hear the thing you're talking about, what's coming down?
Well, they're saying by Thursday or Friday, we'll have some kind of, we'll be letting this bid, correct?
Yes. So you're looking at roughly thirty more days. And I know Mr. Massey's gonna come in here and get me on that one because I told him it'd be tore down by the thirty-first of October. But we had other problems and we're gonna fix those problems as we move along too. We're gonna, we're gonna take care of them, guys. So on that notion, I will entertain a motion for fourteen, fourteen seventy-two, to tear down three hundred Stevens to add to that list.
I make a motion, we tear down fourteen, fourteen seventy-two Stevens.
Three hundred Stevens. Second, Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Great. Okay, the next one we got is our resolution to extend our cooperative agreement, and I'll read that here. This resolution, fourteen, fourteen seventy-three, is authorization to extension of termination date of December thirty-first, participation in local government road fund program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation, whereas the city of Grants entered into a cooperative agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation on November twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen. The city of Grants has requested and has been granted additional time to complete the designated project, projects development, design, construction of various city streets. The total cost of the project will be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which has been funded or proportionally shared by the parties here as follows. The New Mexico Department of Transportation shall be seventy-five percent or a hundred and twenty thousand, city grants will be forty thousand and twenty-five percent. Now therefore be it resolved that the official session that the governing body, the city grants determined resolves the orders as follows. That the time extension for the referred cooperative agreement is adopted and has priority standing. This agreement terminates on December thirty-first, twenty fifteen, and the city in Grants incorporates all the agreements, convenience and understandings between the parties heretofore concerning the subject matter hereof, and all such covenants, agreements and understandings have been merged into the written agreement. Therefore be it resolved by the city of Grants to enter into the extension of termination to December thirty-first, twenty fifteen of the cooperative agreement, control number blase with the state of the New Mexico Department of Transportation.
This is for phase two of second street.
This will go from this first block to the ditch.
So when are we planning to get started on this?
In the spring.
In the spring.
Very soon.
It was supposed to be done by December and for some reason Wilson and Company didn't get the design done and so now they're recommending that we start construction in the spring. So that's why we had to extend the deadline for our agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept resolution number fourteen dash fourteen seventy-three.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Great. The last one on the item is approval of pave or chip and seal on Akuma Street. We discussed this a little bit at the emergency meeting. Obviously, chip and seal won't work because the road is like this, so my recommendation is that we pave it. Because if not, we're just gonna end up with all that gravel down San Fei already.
I agree.
Paul indicated that this is probably gonna cost around twenty-three thousand dollars.
That's on top of the twenty.
On top of what we've already spent, okay? So on that, go ahead.
I don't think we have a choice.
There it is. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and pave Akuma Street at a cost of roughly twenty-three thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion, we'll go ahead and pave Akuma Street with the additional funding